Uh, thanks to everybody for coming. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start our work session. Uh, we have two items on the agenda for the work session. Uh, the comprehensive plan and then the proposed budget. Uh, if we dispose of those two topics fairly quick, I may go ahead and shift, uh, Sheriff's Department officials up to the work session so they can talk to us about it, uh, about, um, some of the recent calls here and some opportunities that Sharpsburg has, just to go ahead and move them on and, and so that way we've got some time to actually discuss it. So, the comprehensive plan, um, as it is stand- as it stands now, we may leaning towards probably we'll have a public hearing on our next, um, council meeting, December the ninth, to hold the kickoff presentation by Three Rivers to do, is it December the ninth?
Um, well, we have December the seventh.
Seven, okay, I'm sorry, December the seventh. At our next regular council meeting, we'll, we'll, we will probably do a public hearing to kick off the, um, comprehensive plan. Uh, that is when we can start the process. It is not due until October of twenty-one. We have until then to approve it, but because we don't know what's gonna happen over the next several months, I'd like to go ahead and get the process started and then that way we can work on it as a, as a committee with the steering committee. Um, for the steering committee, and I had, I had hoped that several of them were gonna be here tonight, but we've got Tony Brown, who's a, a business owner in town, we've got Alessandro and Alex, I'm, I'm, I cannot pronounce the last name, so I'm not, not even gonna try it, it's two Wellsburg Station residents, we've got mayor, we've got council member, and then, uh, Joe Bridges is also gonna be on the comprehensive plan, and then Ms. Beverly Thomas, right, or Marsh, okay, from the Bank OZK, is also gonna be on our comprehensive plan. Um, so, and basically, what we're gonna do is we're gonna set out the strategic five to ten year vision for the town of Sharpsburg. You have our current comprehensive plan right here in front of you, um, and, and you can see, it's, it's, it's a good document, but we certainly see where we can make improvements, and we're just gonna look at what the town needs strategically over the next five to ten years and figure out how we start planning for it. Um, we will update the community goals and policies.
I'm sorry, I've got to get to the call.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
The comprehensive plan pretty much sets the, sets the bumpers.
Mm-hmm.
That, I mean, we can use it as a defensive mechanism.
Yes.
And we can use it as an offensive mechanism, both?
Yes.
All right.
Four, six, three, seven is the pin, the host pin.
What, what's the role of, of, uh?
Four, seven, three.
The Flint River crowd.
Four, six, three, seven. Uh, Three Rivers Regional Commission, uh, gets paid, they have planners on staff that help the town's plan.
Did they do, did they get involved with it last time?
Yes, they did, yes, and in fact, uh, in fact, they're, they are the ones who are going to do the, the kickoff presentation, because they have a full presentation to present, to talk about the process and all.
You and I have talked about, about this a couple of times. I've got some, I have some real problems with the things that are in the one now.
Mm-hmm, yes.
There, there, there are eleven instances where they've talked about increasing the density of housing, uh, there are numerous points where they're talking about trying to, trying to get away from automobiles in town, and those things are, those things sound really wonderful, but, I mean, if you're, if you're at a, you know, some university somewhere, but in reality, it ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of DCAs and, and the regional commissions', um, priorities are to have more livable, walkable community, walkable communities, especially in sixteen, when we were doing it. But I see, I, I, I know where you're coming from, and, and I don't disagree, there should be some reference to it, but it doesn't need to be eleven of them, and it doesn't need to require that we will do this instead of that.
It'll revolve around that.
You're right, this is, this gives us the bumpers in which we can, we can work.
You can pick up this document now, if you're a developer, and you wanted to put in some high-density apartments, in federal housing, just on the border of town, and, and we try to, so we say, no, we cannot, we don't want that, you say, Nick, your, your, your document says you want eleven places that you want it.
Yeah.
I just wanna avoid that kind of problem.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, and that, and those are the things that DCA will help facilitate, is narrowing down that list, but this, it's gonna be driven through the town.
Well, I see, and we've talked about it, and that's my understanding, I just wanna reiterate it.
Yes, yes, yeah, and that was one of the things, if you look at this now, it's a good document, but it's almost like it's a wish list, and there's no way to tell us how to protect existing infrastructure investments by encouraging infill redevelopment and compact building patterns. I don't mind having this as a goal, but let's figure out what is the first or second step to get to that, you know?
Well, yeah, in the same, by the same token, I mean, you, you've got, you've got wording in there that says we wanna protect our natural resources. We don't have any natural resources. We've got a creek, we've got a creek that runs through your daddy's front yard that's half underground.
Uh-huh, right, yeah.
So, you know, we don't, so why do we have all that kinda stuff in it?
Oh, well, because it's, because, and Kim from Three Rivers can answer this better than I can, but because it's template language and they wanted to make sure that they touched on natural resource protection, basically, you know, in case somebody wanted to come in and put in a sterilization factory, we could say, no, because we're looking to protect it via whatever, so.
Well, again, we've talked about it before, and you know my feelings on it.
Oh, absolutely, sure, 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 but I really think we have a chance now to change it into something that is usable, and this does provide justification for our, our budgets, any capital improvements, and, and we're gonna really need to look at strategically some of the long-range stuff that we wanna do. Um, utility service, do we wanna, what utilities could we provide, how could we provide them, and then what do we do to set it up? Um, if we wanna do a commercial improvement district, that would be contained, in fact, I think that language may already be in here.
It is.
If we wanted to do a DVA, Downtown Development Authority, you know, this would provide us justification to do that, so these are the, the big-ticket, big-picture items for us to, that we want to, that we wanna build to.
Yeah, you've also got a, a comment in there about, about fixing up or raising abandoned buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And getting some of the housing up to snuff.
Yep.
I mean, that's my words, up to snuff, but, uh, that to me is more important than protecting the...
Absolutely, yeah, because it's an immediate fix, and it is immediate, an immediate buck to the value and, um, beauty of the town.
Yep.
Another part of it is gonna, if you flip to the back a couple pages, the community work program is back there, and then as part of this, we will give council an update, and you guys are gonna be extremely proud of the staff of this and previous councils for all the work that they have done, because we have completed, I wanna say, half of these, close if not to more than half of these, and it's a very, very impressive list of things that we have accomplished out of this, even given our finite staff resources and, and money that we've got.
Yeah, and that's been the last year and a half, really, a lot of it.
Yeah, yeah, last couple of years.
I mean, since, since we came along.
Yep. Um, I think we've got a good mix on the, on the steering committee, you know, we've got business owners, we've got property owners, we've got residents, um, and I'm really looking forward to having some good discussions with everybody on the comprehensive plan.
And again, you're talking about alternating us?
Um, if, if I wanna have more than one of y'all in the room, we're gonna have to either advertise it as a public hearing for the meetings, or we're gonna have to rotate, uh, because we can only, we can't have a forum in the room for really anything.
Well, Tom's got nothing but time.
Mm-hmm. You got volunteer, Tom.
She's, she's the mother of my grandchildren.
So, but yeah, we, Brad, what would you, you recommend for us to do in that situation? We wanna have more than one council member at the, um, comprehensive work sessions. Do we just hold a work session, do we do it before the council meetings? Oh, what do we, what would you advise?
Well, as long as you advertise it as a work session.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you just specify no action will be taken.
Okay, in, in the advertisement? Okay, so it's certainly possible for us to advertise it as a work session with no action to be taken, and then we can have, Stan can come to every one of them. Sound good? I have to work. Well, I'll do it, I'll do it late at night.
I'll do it.
What, about eight o'clock, nine o'clock?
I'm in the bed by then.
Oh, six o'clock, seven o'clock? Okay, so, I just wanted to make sure that, that we offer counsel, you know, the chance to attend i- if their schedule allowed, and then also to make sure we, we met the sunshine laws. Uh, do I have any questions from the audience about the comprehensive plan or anything like that? Um, Beverly, Ms. Beverly, you have any questions? Okay, everybody, this is Beverly Mar- Thomas, oh, okay, I'm sorry, um...
And I'm sorry, I was late.
No, 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 no worries.
I had a alarm going off at the bank, so I had to wait until...
Oh, she, she is the branch manager at the, oh, Bank of OZK, right, our hometown bank right here in Sharpsburg, so we're very excited that, that she's interested and engaged, and, you know, we've been very happy with the, with the, the bank and the services, and thank y'all for being engaged in the community.
We love our bankers, yes.
Yes, they are quite good to us.
I can't get, get to answer my text, or she's not following me.
Okay, we'll just, just, just leave it, or leave it, just leave it going for another few minutes and we'll...
Catch her up.
Yeah, catch her up. Um, so that's, that's the plan, we'll kick off hopefully December the seventh with a public hearing. Brad, can we do two public hearings back to back, or do we have to?
Yes.
Okay, so we could do a public hearing with DCA, or with Three Rivers, and then do the budget public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I've already answered that.
Oh, oh, okay, good, 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 good. All right, so if we don't have any other questions about the comprehensive plan, um, we can go ahead and move on to the budget, but I wanna make sure that everybody is, is open, understands, and is okay before we are on the comp plan. Good, okay.
Yep.
So, twenty twenty-one budget, uh, we have to approve it at the January meeting or before, we have to have a public hearing to discuss it, so because we're hoping to do the public hearing December, pass and approve in January, we're presenting it to y'all in November to look at, think about, and, and go over. Uh, basically, high points this year, um, it's roughly a four and a half percent increase. Uh, we focused a lot on personnel, we have focused a good bit on, uh, more of the, once again, administrative procedures and a lot of the foundational stuff. Uh, we, you will also see that we have added a, a couple of lines for things that we hope will come up in the comprehensive plan and in our discussions, uh, moving forward, but Dana, do you wanna speak about, talk about specific things within the, um, the budget?
Um, we did take about a thousand dollars out of, um, let me see right here, for the building inspections, things of that nature, so that we could put money into, um, maybe code enforcement somewhere, under professional services.
And that's gonna be under the expenditures on the second page.
Yes, expenditures, I'm sorry.
Uh, one, and three, four, about five lines, about five lines down.
Yeah, you can't see, um, code enforcement.
And you can see the differences in, in the budgets, uh, where we have, have brought more money, and you'll see that we have realigned some of the, um, amounts, you'll see, well, we've taken smaller amounts out of others to go into some of our more, uh, priority areas, mainly personnel.
Yeah, that's, we've reduced some things, we've already bought, updated our computers, um, we have purchased a, uh, a, a conference table with chairs, so we don't need a whole lot of money in there next year, um, you know, we did our increases for utilities and trash. Other than that, I think everything is looking pretty good still. If you see our revenues, um, the state was having an issue with acetylm and TAD taxes, so you can see we have not, um, gotten all of that, but I'm thinking in the future, maybe they're gonna change something, 'cause I have already, um, sent in all of my figures to kinda help, um, figure out who's losing what and how much, and is this state law just not...
Yeah, state law changed, and Brad can throw in some more details, state law changed a couple of years ago, that went from the yearly birthday tax to paying all the taxes the time you buy, states lost a lot, or not state, counties, cities lost a lot of money, squeal, so they went back and fixed the law to, to balance it out a little bit, and so that's why there's such a big difference in the intangible tax and the personal property, property motor vehicle tax between the two years. And then when we get over to our, um, budget for twenty twenty, you, you can see the three thousand and four thousand difference between the, um, between the two line items, but basically, it, it should balance out, in, in the long run, it'll come out in the wash. Anything else to add on that, Brad?
No, just hopefully over time that they re, and it was all about reallocating the money, still tax the same way, but it was the way the former was allocating the money when you stayed, two boards, counties and cities, you know, counties and cities kinda came out on the short end, cities came out on the shorter end, so this is, legislation is supposed to reallocate those, put cities back in a more equal position as where they were before the law changed.
And we did receive about three thousand dollars in our lost payments, um, this past month because of the sales and use tax, um, they had, yeah, they had to go back in and found that they were overbilling somebody, and they dispersed millions of dollars back into the cities and counties, so we got our three thousand dollars this past month, and that was awesome. We also received our premium tax, insurance premium tax of twenty-three thousand dollars, so yay!
But that's, but that's in twenty twenty, though.
Yeah.
That's, that's the current budget that we're operating under. So, what, I guess what we, we would like for y'all to think about is the priorities for next year, we, we've heard some of them, uh, code enforcement, uh, building inspection, looking at, at beautification, which, really for code enforcement, um, is gonna help, you know, improve what we've, uh, what we've got.
I got a, a couple of, this is a real quick question, I had given you a list of, uh, people that were renting out their places here, and there were, there were about eight...
There were eight unidentified, and...
Well, there were, there were eight people or groups that rent, that rented out about thirty units, are, are they paying business taxes?
Yes.
Business licenses, all of them?
Yeah, we have thirty-seven businesses in town, a lot of those are home-based versus...
I'm talking about the people that are, that are renting out apartments, kinda, apartments, townhouses and their, and houses.
That have business in them?
No, these are, these are businesses that are...
They have a business license to be a landlord.
These are businesses that are, that are renting out rental residences.
We don't, the only landlords that we have is Blue's daddy, he has a business license just for that.
Okay, well, there are...
But nobody else in town has a business license to be a landlord.
There are seven others besides Blue's daddy that are renting out more than two pla- two or more places, some of them four, some of them six, should we go after them as, for business licenses?
That would require a change to our occupational tax ordinance. Um, Brad, what's the policy on landlords having business licenses? Do you know of any, um, stuff that's been done in other...
Well, most places, anyone who has four or more units will go after them, uh, the, 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 from an enforcement standpoint, uh, a lot of jurisdictions see that, so I think that example I gave Blue is that you moved to Florida, and you're gonna live down there for two years and then come back, and while you're living in Florida, you rent your house.
Rent your house, yeah.
Then they're not gonna go after, it's not worth the effort to go after that type of rental situation.
Well, we've got twice...
But if you've got an investor who owns, well, even if, if the investor owns multiple units, then it is required that they have enough payment back.
Yeah.
Okay, is that required by our code currently, or...
I think it is.
Okay.
Otherwise, why don't your father pay it?
Cause that's...
I, I'll talk to you about that, but I read it when you sent it to me, and I didn't see the section for it.
Okay, cause I, I, I saw where it kind of said they probably should, but I never saw it explicitly stated.
Right, and protocol happening...
Yes, and how to do it.
After tenants leaving and...
Yeah, well, we've probably got, and I'm doing this from memory, we've probably got, uh, five companies that are renting out more than, more than four, four or more in town, and, and one of those is Blue's daddy, so we've got quite a few, well, I'll be able to grab her.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious what, how that would impact this, this, uh, ch-ch-ch-ch-chu, well, you're, you're halfway down, your business and occupation tax.
Yeah, it would, it would bump it a little bit, I mean, we're probably, we're probably not gonna get maybe, what, a hundred? How much you, how much, how would we, how would we do that, off of the...
It's based on estimated grocery receipts, um, sometimes they pay less than fifty dollars for that business license, but, you know, at least it gives us the opportunity to go in and inspect when, when somebody leaves.
Well, you got...
We need to redo our ordinance, I believe, to better satisfy what we're trying to do.
Well, like, uh, most of all of these ordinance is based on a model that was put together in the mid-nights, uh, when there was a change in state law, it did away with, quote, business licenses per se with occupational tax, and, um, uh, of course, different people set different rates based upon the number of categories they put in, and so, I won't say that there is some, there's some differentiation as opposed to discrimination between the way some people set up their brackets for payment, so that's to say that a, you know, a rental agency in Newnan versus relation in Griffin, or one in Atlanta, or one in Sharpsburg, may be bringing in different numbers based upon the category of practice that they put in there.
Right.
So, you know, but we can take a look, but whatever, I mean, a lot of people, then, part of the problem was it was hard to read and understand.
Yes.
My interest is, is to get, is to get the money from the business licenses, but also use this as a mechanism for opening the door, if you wanna make sure there's a smoke detector in place, those kinds of things, get some basic specs...
Um, safety and health.
Yeah, while making sure the places are safe.
Well, that, that...
An electrical is up there.
That becomes, that's two different issues.
I know, but it's...
I think that's not tied to the inspection side.
Right.
Inspection side, and there's a case out of Marietta, and I think we discussed this last time, there's also a case out of Caffey County, with Caffey County passed a law saying they wanted all rental units to be registered with the city, and the Court of Appeals said you can't do that, all right? Uh, and so, uh, but then, the reverse of that was, they also passed a law that said all lenders holding title before closed properties had to register, and the Court of Appeals said that was okay, so for our banking crowd, shows that the banking lobby was less efficient than the renters lobby in that particular instance, but, uh, City Marietta passed an ordinance that said any rental unit, whether it was single-family, multi-family, or whatever, any rental unit, uh, had to submit an inspection, and the way it was set up, for a single-family unit was once every four years, for some of the multi-family units, it was, you know, of all the units, over four units, um, every fourth year, uh, and the Superior Court of County threw that out by saying the mechanism for which you inspect single-family residences is your, uh, code enforcement for unsafe structures, and you do that on a complaint basis. Now, we have argued, and you raised the issue, uh, about the smoke alarms, in other words, if, if, if there is, and most jurisdictions aren't doing this, but if you turn around and satisfy, uh, the ordinance said at some point require the rental to certify that he's got a smoke alarm, or you allow the tenant to complain, and that was part of the thing that the court argument was, that you already have that right, you know, it's better to do it on a complaint basis, but if you have reasonable suspicion that a particular rental is unsafe, you can inspect it anyway, and so the whole idea was shifting the cost of the inspection to the landlord as opposed to the city. Now, a lot of the cities have adopted ordinances recently, and as of yet, there has, there has been no challenge to them, but all of those are mainly for larger developments. The one we just adopted that goes into the back twenty twenty-one, the new one is anything four units or more, and so far, we had, had any pushback, but some of these landlords, and the reason for that is some states' laws are different, and a lot of these multi, you know, three hundred sixty apartment units are operating in various states, and they, they're happy to comply, so our, our problem is, you know, what with the Superior Court, there've been no test cases other than ones that I just mentioned, so, but anyway, you do have that right, you get the landlord to complain that, you know, my land, uh, or the tenant complained my landlord will come fix a leak in my plumbing, then you can automatically go in and conduct an inspection and bring your unsafe structure, uh, ordinance in, and you've got an unsafe structure, and you can order it to be repaired or modified.
Okay, so, so we need to look at that triggering mechanism, is what you're, is, is, is what I'm hearing, we need to look at that?
Well, one way to do that is send out a letter to all the residents, to addresses, and tell them that you got complaints with what your landlord's doing with your property company, the fear there of some of these is that the landlord's gonna raise the rent, you know, if he, if he does something, so there's a little bit of a friction going on between landlords and tenants.
Okay.
But, of course, you know, they just passed the new law that said, that talked about the dispossession side, if, if the landlord is trying to dispossess somebody because of repairs that, that they have, the tenant has complained about, that the landlord, or the tenant can get five hundred dollars in damages from the landlord, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's being addressed on certain levels, but, uh...
Okay.
We can, we can have further discussion about whether we wanna get, but again, it's, then it gets to be at, at a, you know, if you don't get them, then you're gonna have to turn around and go to your inspection company and get them to go in and do the inspection.
Okay.
It's all about the laws.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so, so I think what I'm hearing is, is we need to come, we need to figure out what exactly we can do, how we can do it, and what the next step is, so let us work on, let town staff and Brad and I, and probably full-time, and then Elizabeth and, um, work on pulling together the ordinance and getting it, um, shaped up and, and then bring it before council and, and look at it and talk about it a little bit. Um, is there any other question or conversation from council or even from the public on the budget that we have proposed for twenty twenty-one? You've got your revenues on the first page, and then expenditures on the second page, and splosh on the third page.
Do you feel comfortable enough about, about get, going after some of these large owners to goose the, to goose the, uh, license?
One, one of the things that, that we have prided ourselves on and have taken a little bit of a hit on is treating everybody the same, and if that's the law, or that's the rule in town, then everybody's gonna comply with it, so if it's an action that council wants to take and we take it to approve the town, then absolutely, I have no problem with it. Um, I just wanna make sure that there are as few unintended consequences as possible, because if we step in something, I wanna make sure we've thought about what we're about to step into, that's my only thing.
It's gonna be the same across the board.
Yes, yeah, the same across the board. Any other questions on the budget? For the public hearing, um, agenda, can we amend the agenda to bring in the Sheriff's Department?
Well, this is just a work session, so...
Okay, do we need to amend the agenda, or can we just call them out?
Just call them.
Okay, so... Okay, so we have talked about having a deputy, um, in town for a limited number of hours a week to do basically traffic enforcement is what we were looking at, but of course, it would be any and all things that come across their desk. Um, we have Major Fininger and.
Chuck Smith?
Ray.
Oh, Captain.
Captain Smith. I had the Smith part right. I just wasn't sure what the, how, how many bars were, were on the shoulder. But Captain Smith and Major Fininger, and, and they have some information for us that they're gonna talk about, and then we can get into the, um, information on the contract deputies. So Major, Captain, whichever one of y'all, um, already?
Can I move this thing? That's good, okay. Um, hi, I'm Mark Fininger. I'm the patrol division director at the sheriff's office, Cowee County. Um, give y'all an idea of our manpower for patrol for Cowee County. We have over a hundred deputies that patrol the streets. That doesn't count the rest of our department. We're like two hundred and seventy-four personnel in our department. So, um, we had originally talked probably a year ago about this. Um, one of the new things going on in the state of Georgia is cities are starting to contract instead of creating their own police departments. They're starting to contract with the sheriff's office. We recently talked about that. Financially, that's just not feasible for the Sharksburg, I don't think. Cause you're, you guys are not analyzing, the growth is there, your growth is coming, but it's not here yet. And the cost for a contract service for a city this small is just something that we looked at and said, we don't recommend it. It's gonna cost you a lot of money. Um, and so what we did is we had our intel ladies pull these numbers, and they did from downtown center of, uh, Sharksburg, a three mile radius, which some of this is not inside your city, to show the call volume for the past year. Um, as you can see in here, some of this to make any sense, area logs is our patrol car comes in and it drives through your business parking lots. And it, we log it. We'll say, hey, we checked these five businesses, log it. So as you can see, our officers are here a lot, and on security checks, that's a home where you've, you're gone on vacation. You said, hey, I want my house checked while you're going on vacation, or you had something recently happen. And so we've checked your, your house, I mean, sixty-six times. That's pretty, that's a lot for this little area. Uh, and as you can see the rest, one of the things you see, we've made over four hundred and something traffic stops in this little area. So our guys are working traffic here, um, and, uh, it, and the crime rate here, again, that's not all within your city. Uh, it's out, it's within that three mile radius, so there's not a lot there. So we understand that you got a little frustration with some tractor trailers cutting through the side roads and all. And our recommendation is to allow our zone cars, we've got two cars that are every day, twenty-four hours a day, that are assigned between here and Sonoy. Uh, now, they're catching calls and they have the volume of work they do, but we can task them to try to catch the tractor trailers that are cutting through your side roads. I don't think, um, it's financially feasible to try to pay a deputy to be here for four hours to sit there and watch a road. You're just not gonna get a deputy volunteer to do that. Um, in the meantime, we have calls going everywhere, citizen sees a car sitting there and, hey, my mom needs you down there. So it just causes more chaos, I think, than what it's worth. Um, but we wanted to talk to y'all and see where you're going. Talking about the future, um, we've got a five-year plan in the sheriff's office where we see our manpower growing by at least twenty-five, uh, more personnel for the patrol division alone. Um, within the next five years, we see about, we're gonna get another precinct. We've already got two precincts now within the county. Uh, we're gonna get another precinct on the far north side. Um, so these are the growths that we're experiencing, which I'm sure that means you guys are gonna experience some growth too with all this. Um, but this was, we just wanted to give you these numbers, let you guys know where we're at. Uh, the services, I'm sure all of you are from here, been here most, you know, like me and, uh, Captain Smith, we've been here all our lives, and so this is all we know. I remember when Sharksburg was really considered a big town, cause there was nothing in the county, and it kind of switched. Now there's stuff out in county and Sharksburg's still the small town. Um, but I'll answer any que, or y'all have any questions or anything to?
So I guess the first question that, that I have, and, and I think it's just, is, is terminology. When we talked earlier about a contract deputy, that was for a deputy in a car and benefits and insurance and all that to, to have him for a year. Once we got that price, and I think it was like a hundred and.
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, it was like a hundred and eighty-five a year. I mean, it's like three quarters of our budget, if not eighty percent of it. I was kind of, is there, is there an hourly rate that we could get just for?
It would be fifty dollars an hour for the deputy and then ten dollars an hour for the car.
Okay, and that's kind of what we, I, I think that is what council, I think, was more thinking about is just getting, you know, a maximum of ten hours a week and then the deputy, whoever.
The problem we run into is a minimum of four hours.
Okay.
They don't, they don't come out for one hour because they're already having to work a shift. They have to make plans to work apart. It's considered what we call a part-time job.
Yes, and that's kind of, I think, what we were aiming for is, is picking, finding, uh, uh, an amount of hours that would make sense budget-wise and for the deputy.
So again, my recommendation is give us six months after January, starting in January, cause we have operations that we do periodically through the year. And we've got several for the holidays that we do that all our people are tied up on.
Right.
For the, you know, parking lot safety and all that. But in January, allow us, give us six months to see what we can do for you without you spending any of this money.
Okay.
You know, we're already giving you the service. I mean, the county is, the sheriff's office, and that's what we're here for. We're not.
Right.
Look, we don't look and go, well, that's in Sharksburg, we'll let them deal with it. No, it's, hey, it's a call's a call. We go handle it. And the same thing for these subdivisions we have, when people complain about people running stop signs or speeding, we task our officers to try to go fix that problem. Um, I think one of the things we talked about was, uh, if you do have these construction companies that are coming through with the big trucks, let's reach out to the companies themselves with the letterhead saying, hey, look, our ordinances are do not come through this way. They're in state law. We're asking the sheriff's office to enforce this. Could you please ask your drivers not to come through? Um, because now, one of the things we don't require officers to do, they'll stop the trucks, but we, we don't say you're gonna write a ticket.
No.
We give them that decision to make that day on their own. Um, and so they may be stopping the car. Now, again, if he stops them twice, I'm sure you're gonna get a ticket.
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, there may be a lot of traffic stops where you don't get any, you go, hey, how many tickets y'all wrote? Zero, but we made eighty-two traffic stops.
And see, that, that is not anything the town would want to ask the deputy or whatever, ask the deputy. It's simply, you know, just make the stop and do whatever you think is appropriate in the situation. You know, we would never ask for a certain number of tickets. That's, no, that wouldn't be appropriate.
And y'all, I think y'all just had a, uh, affair or?
Yes, we had our Sharksburg market, yes.
So we had a deputy down here. I think he was helping y'all out. So you, you know, the ones you know, you can always reach out to and try to work out. If you say, hey, look, I'd like to sit by getting you out here for three hours, and you have a personal relationship with this officer, and he is willing to do that as long as it's through us and it's approved by us, then he can do that for you.
Okay.
Uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, uh, deny that. We just need to know and it needs to be documented, cause he is still working for us.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And falls under our liability.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, anything that we do is gonna be in full coordination and conversation with the sheriff's department.
And anything he writes goes back to the county, right?
Yes, sir, it goes back to the county. Goes back to the state court. We, uh, we, we used to do, we used, we, we still do, but if we're inside the city limits, we have a, a co, uh, not a contract, but a group of officers that are writing a city ticket. We don't normally do that because you guys, your court is different. You'd have to, because radar, our radar in the city of Nunez radar is all under the state contracts we have that they're all, they'll work together. Y'all don't have that here, so you have to follow the county's permits for radar and stuff. So that's why you're speeding and stuff like that, never could come through Sharksburg, um, city, because you don't have the, the permits and stuff. And that would, I would not advise on that. That's a time-consuming pain.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, yeah, we, um, this is a new thing that apparently is happening in Georgia a lot, a lot more is bigger cities, instead of getting police departments, are starting a contract with sheriff's office, so they don't have to worry about the personnel problems.
Right.
And all that, so, uh, you guys are kind of ahead of the times. I think we're, you're probably ten years away from really doing that. I, that's just my guess right there, but.
Yeah, and I would absolutely agree with you on the police department itself, but yeah, we, we would not look to contract everything. Just spot enforcement to solve a specific problem that we've had, and we've taken other measures to try to interdict, but, you know, we're still having issues with it.
That would be one of my questions. I just wonder what that would be prior to what we already have documented that we do now that the citizens pay us to do by taxes. Would that be like code enforcement? Is that what we're talking about, so then?
Oh, no, this is just traffic. Well, this specific issue is the big trucks downtown. And of course, anything else that, that comes up in the course of the shift or the whatever, have him or her handle. But now, the, the, the one specific thing is, is through traffic through downtown with the big trucks.
So primarily traffic and anything inside that less than a mile radius, but nothing with code enforcement or anything?
Could we use the sheriff's department for code enforcement?
Well, I know there would probably be some that we tried, but that wouldn't be.
We were.
That wouldn't be, yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I, that was the answer I was expecting, but.
It was, we all discussed it, so are they gonna ask us for that?
No, I, I, no, 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 no. It's purely traffic enforcement to, 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 to stop the big trucks. Yeah, no.
And just giving people, you know, someone that they see regularly, you know?
You know, people don't speed through Whitesburg, because they have the guy sitting right there with the railroad tracks or right there before the school. And that's, not that we want to have somebody there like Whitesburg does, but we would like for there.
Presence.
Be, yeah.
Yeah.
About more of a, a presence, just sitting. And they, they do a good job of, of sitting at the church and then sitting down here at the gas stations, even at the bank. And, and I understand it because it's, you know, it's the highway, you know, so there's a lot more traffic. But we still have the big trucks that are coming through here and.
Yeah, our, our, unfortunately, our call volume is so high, a hundred and thirty thousand calls per server a year, four million now, so.
Yep.
And if you do the numbers, there's twenty of us on the, on the field, I don't feel like at the one time.
Right, yep.
So these guys, you know, back in the day at midnight, we would shut down, back when I was on the road. Now it's midnight, they're not even slowing down, so that's the challenge we run into, but. I, if you, I think we give it six months, I mean, let's look in July and come back, and we'll come back to the board and show you numbers and we'll show you what we've done. If you just, if you'll give us that time, that way you don't worry about having to try to figure out your money, um, because we're gonna give you a service.
Right.
Sheriff's office is here to do, it's what you pay taxes for, um, and so we're gonna make sure that happens. It may take a little longer than others, other than you're not the one caller coming.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, when is, uh, three, are twelve parks gonna crank up?
I mean, they're building right now, but I mean, it's still phase one.
Where is the twelve park though?
Uh, Reese and McIntosh.
Okay. Yeah, that's, look, y'all are experiencing more of a street. Y'all seen popular road lately?
Yeah, crazy.
And, uh, yeah, so, um, we, I've got the clients that came in the other day, cause I was talking to him about it, and I said, man, look, five hundred and sixty homes, here they are, they're already starting to build.
Yeah, twelve parks is gonna be, I think, uh, twelve hundred, or right now, I think it's six hundred and something.
Six is.
I think it was originally for six hundred.
Okay.
Cause when I got the records for those a couple of months, or a year ago, I was like, what did that? I didn't, I forgot about it too, y'all, she's interested.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so that goes back to the growth, but we're looking, you know, again, you could say, hey, here's you the money to hire twenty people. It's gonna take us four years to hire twenty of them, just to get qualified, what we want, twenty people, high quality.
Yeah, you, you, you don't want, you don't want twenty people. You want twenty post-certified.
You don't want twenty rookies.
Five years of experience.
You can hire them out of California and Wisconsin?
Well, they, yeah, they might start coming. So, but, uh, yeah, just again, and again, uh, Cole always calls us or texts me, and so y'all are more than welcome to reach out to me, um, at any time that you have a problem. A lot of times he's just asking, hey, what are you gonna do? You got five cars over here.
Yeah, I came down the other day down sixteen, and there was three or four cars right there at Stone Ball in Maine, and I was like, oh, guys, everything okay? And sure enough, it was a, it was a traffic stop, yeah. And, and I will say that anytime any of us have had interactions with your guys and Al's, man, they, they've all, they've been great. We really enjoy the partnership with you guys.
Your county commissioner is full, so, yeah, make sure, you know, he, he's in touch with me all the time. I see him in the commissioner meeting. So if you have to come across him, you need to have a conversation with him about mentioning him. He'll, he'll email or he'll call.
Okay.
So you don't think you just gotta call us.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, council, do.
I had a request. I know, I know y'all sit down here a lot, but right here on one fifty-four, there's a lot of speeding. I don't know if y'all patrol that area a lot or not, but, cause it goes from forty-five to thirty-five right there, and they're doing fifty when they're going down there, I know, cause they just flying. So if you could put a little extra emphasis on that.
We'll mention it to them. You know, and again, that goes back to, a lot of times you get areas like that, we, we have to set your driveway. Of course, it's set on the side of the road, so.
Do, do we need to find some driveways for you?
No, just when you zoom in the driveway, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
I know at one time we had to, that radar sign or something sitting up there, that really helped for a while, but.
We've only got one of those, and believe it or not, you guys know how big this county is, if you, you know, we're a very large county. And, uh, it's, it's constantly moving, we're constantly.
We can put ours on?
Yeah, I, I had a question with DOT about putting it on the state highway, and I think I've asked it. Let me, let me go back and look, and look it up, because I, I think they may have responded. Well, actually, you know, one of the, you know, I think they did respond. I'll go back and confirm it, but my problem was, is how do I change that battery?
Well, we're gonna get a solar, right?
Yeah, we, we, we could buy a solar radar sign that sits right there, because I, I'll be honest with you.
Well, I think we can use what we have.
Just get a solar.
It's not being used right now, it's just sitting there.
No, 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 they don't have an adapter. They, it's either the battery power that you can move around, it's portable, or the solar that's mounted and permanent. There's no, they don't have a portable that has the solar that you can attach to.
I think we got that thing to move it around and get some use out of it.
Look, I don't.
Another thing you could do is contact the state patrol.
When they comply.
And tell them about the commercial vehicle.
Part of being, part of being married.
That's all they do.
Oh, yeah.
Part of being married, risking your life for this town.
Someone's going on with those guys. I've seen more state patrol in the last six months than I've seen in the last ten years. Is that just my, just my mind or?
You retired, Tom, and you're sitting at the house all day.
Right, exactly.
A lot of them live here. But our state patrol post is, when I started in eighty-nine, it was, they were running seventeen, they're down to nine, I think they have nine troopers now. Cowee and Hur, that's combined.
They don't run Fayette County anymore. Is that by design, being down that many troopers?
Uh, yeah, well, Metro Atlanta took most of them. All of their help and their problems.
Poor guys.
I like, I like getting some more to their phones.
Yeah.
Well, I'm a little smaller reduced there. I'm sure they did.
Yeah, I'm sure.
State files.
All right, uh, are there any questions from the public for?
I would like to get, what Stan said is same thing, they're gunning it from that stop sign passing your house. And that's the same thing at the intersection where the bank is coming this way. It sounds like an airplane taking off sometimes, because they're gunning, so the suggestion somebody made about the sign being placed there with the speed thing, I think it really wouldn't help.
Yeah.
And while I'm at it, I wanna thank Stan for starting the conversation about land section and Rupert following up. It's enormous chance, I say. You can see the cars slowing down and all of those posts are still standing up.
Yeah.
That's remarkable, isn't it?
It is remarkable, yes.
Well, thank you. Okay, so let us, I mean, we can go ahead and price out the signs. I'll go ahead and tell you probably the least.
Just use our, our sign we have.
On the big, busy highway? If I, if I can find a spot to change it without sticking my tail into the, into the road, I don't know.
Tom's retired.
Tom. Hey, Tom, you wanna change the battery on the radar sign?
Yeah, 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 before I go along with buying a permanent sign tied up to a solar panel, sure.
Okay, well, okay, we'll look at it.
See, solved that problem.
I have a reminder for Blue every nine days.
Every nine days?
Every nine days, and how it changed out.
Those things are chapter. They're not, they're not. Need to go with our recommendations, wait in six months.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll wait in six months and see how things look. I've got some signs that I'm gonna pick up and put up, and maybe it'll work. But if it doesn't work and the guys do pick up the trucks, they can say, well, there's a bright red and white, red, black and white sign over there that you missed. And there won't be any, any excuse for that. Okay.
And again, like I said, reach out to us.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all for coming.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good one.
Yeah, y'all too.
Thank y'all. All right, so if we don't have any other questions from council or public about the comprehensive plan, the proposed budget, um, or the, the deputies providing, uh, services, we can go ahead and end the work session and then start the regular council meeting.